We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Yeah.
That was your name. Is there a lot of lab?
I don't think so.
It's hard to tell.
Just a little bit.
Ramona, do you want to just take over in running the meeting?
If you prefer, I can do that. Okay.
That would be fine.
So I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All here say aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposition. Motion passes. Okay, so we have the facilities work session with the 30-year matrix. So is somebody going to present that to us or are we going to?
Mr. Ferriola, I'll kind of talk you through that.
Okay.
Before we get, take a deep dive into the facilities, there are two budget issues, kind of general budget issues, that CFO and I wanted to make sure the board is aware of.
Okay.
So the first one is when the former CFO wrote the budget, he wrote it based on two units of growth and we're actually three units or five units down. We're not quite to, well, we are. We hit the, this was last Friday. So that's about $750,000 that Brian wrote in as revenue that we are not going to get. The other piece of this, and I'm going to, I'll start the conversation, but I'm going to let Jessica explain it. She understands it better than I do. But in Idaho, all of the school districts pay into this pot that they call protection. So if they drop more than 3% in attendance, they don't take that huge hit in that first year. They, the most they'll lose is that 3%. Everybody's in protection this year because of the change from enrollment to ADA. And so we weren't sure if we were going to be allowed to be in protection or not. But I think we have been told that we were. So thankfully, that's good news because that was going to be another $1.2 million hit to our budget. Instead, it's a $200,000 loss. So we're looking at close to a million dollars in revenue that we anticipated that we are not getting based on the way the budget was written. So that's just kind of information I think we just always need to have in the back of our head as we're trying to navigate this year's budget.
Okay, so I guess I would ask that that would all be, or we'll have this, obviously the audio, but that that would be documented and attached to this workshop for historical purposes and so that we can reference it.
Okay.
Because that was something I was going to ask at our regular meeting about the budget so I can just wrap my head around it a little bit better to know exactly where we stand, especially now that we have two more new moving pieces outside of what we already knew. Okay. So a million dollars in our facilities levy, we're still getting that this year or is that?
We are. So, and those are two separate things, obviously, but I think the overall budgetary picture is going to be important.
Right. Okay. Any questions on that or?
Yeah.
All good?
So when we met earlier, I think it was August, to talk about facilities, we, at that point, didn't have a full picture of everything, all the needs in the district. And so the board, when you, when you look at the budget, the board set aside that $700,000 from plant facility for John Brown for next summer. Since then, Mr. Ferriola has brought to the board some things that we just need to discuss. And so we thought a workshop would be appropriate so that we, because we may need to, the board may want to re-prioritize based on the information that Mr. Ferriola has. So particularly with regard to the concrete that we have issues throughout the district and then also playground structures that we're kind of struggling to keep limping along with. And then Dave has his 30-year matrix, so the board can kind of see his plan as far as like all of the roofs have been done. And so there's, he does, he does a really good job of laying out each system in the building and when it was last updated.
I disagree that we set aside $700,000 for the John Brown siding. It was discussed. I do not remember ever saying that we were actually going to do it. It was something we said we could do, but I.
Yeah, we'd have to go back and verify that. I agree. We had a lot of conversation that night.
We had a proposal, but the reason we haven't gone out to bid for it is I haven't had formal action from the board to go out to bid for that project.
So we have it. But we.
We earmarked it.
Yes, yeah. Just because the board had discussed that, so.
It was on the list, didn't we?
Yes.
And that was the early on list, right? That everybody's referring to that list that we got and we said, check, check, check. Okay. I think in the end, I mean, we can go ahead and hear, from my brain, go ahead and listen to what everybody has to say, but I'm going to need more of a, all pieces together because we keep, in my head, to keep getting all these little pieces. But I need an overall picture, just like the budget shortfall. We keep, you know, it's, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. Now we're waiting until February because of whatever has to be filed. But just like this, I really need a total picture of, here's what we talked about. Here's where we're short in the budget. Here's the plant facility. Here, you know, all in one spot. So I can see all the pieces together. And does that make sense to you guys? Because right now, they're all just sort of.
And this is what has happened forever is that we don't have all the information in one spot. It's piecemeal and parts and pieces and it's difficult to track. I agree.
Yeah, that's sort of what the new information, I wish I had had that information coming tonight, then my brain would have been in a different spot. But that's fine. We, I have it now.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I think we talked about the seven or 750 shortfall early on when we had the workshop quite some time ago.
Because I had, I had asked Brian to budget on the flat enrollment, but he didn't. He budgeted.
So we've been aware of that for quite some time. The other part.
We just.
You just. So that's an addition of 200,000.
Right. I don't know, I guess, how, what would that look like? Because I don't, what I'm struggling with a little bit is how do you, how do we show that we're not getting? I mean, that was part of the overall, like, $20 million or whatever that Brian estimated we were getting from the state that we're now not getting.
20 million? All right, I haven't heard 20 million.
No, no, I'm just, no, I'm just saying that, like, I'm just throwing, I don't have the numbers in front of me. But let's say he budgeted.
His shortfall was four and a half million?
That's not what I'm talking about. What I was talking about is just like his SB, what we're getting for salary-based apportionment, the $20 million from the state. I don't know how to show that we're getting 728 million or thousand less there until we amend the budget.
Well, I guess there's a lot of pieces in my head. I know that this is facilities, but I guess there's still a lot of pieces in my head that we don't have is, number one, we have the, we're still have this budget that isn't correct because we now learn that it was wrong, done wrong. And that hasn't been fixed. So it's pretty hard. And the other piece is I still have question on all those places that we quote overspent and it has not been historically a place we overspent. So I would really like to see where we overspent, how many employees were there, what was in this, you know, how did all of a sudden we overspend this huge amount of money where that has never happened before? I question that. So to have all those pieces together, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm looking at this knowing that, I mean, so where do we take the dollars from this if we have a budget that is incorrect?
So I wouldn't say that the budget is incorrect. The only thing that is technically wrong with the budget is the beginning fund balance. It has no bearing on the budget itself. The budget that is in the system is correct. We just have to adjust the fund balance. It doesn't change how we're spending anything because it's just that beginning balance number that's changing. As the board approved the budget, the plan that we had, that, that's not going to change. It's literally just changing one number and that makes the unappropriated balances. So the budget is accurate as far as that goes with the exception of the beginning fund balance.
And the money that she, that Lisa just talked about.
So that piece we do have to adjust. But as far as the budget until this information came forward, the only thing that needed to be changed was the beginning general fund balance.
But that's because the board decided that it would not rebudget everything else, that we would just take it from the fund balance. So my question is, as time goes on and now we keep adding dollars to it, is that appropriate? Should we really look at the budget and say, this just isn't going to work because we keep having more dollars, more dollars, more dollars? And that's what I'm saying. I don't have a total picture. I, I don't have a picture financially really where we're at because we keep getting little pieces that we thought were there and now they're not there and.
So the monthly budget reports do show the total picture and it includes the fund balance for you and where we're at right now. Most budgets are around 17 to 20% spent, which is great for this point in the year. I, I don't have a problem pulling that together to show, we did a lot of work before the school year started to kind of true up the numbers so we didn't eat into fund balance. So there was already a lot of hard work done to make sure that we weren't overspending, knowing we were going to have a hit and knowing that we didn't want to eat into the fund balance even more. So we've already done some of that work. And the important piece is now that we know about protection, it's identifying if that was enough work. But I, I know that we sat here and looked at open positions and retirements and things like that and chose not to fill multiple positions in order to have some savings so that we weren't cutting into the budget. Because the budget was built to eat into fund balance by $750,000 and we were trying to get away from that with some of the work that was done this summer.
So the spending plan and the budget is still intact?
Yes.
And that's the plan that we're following?
Yes.
So there's no change in that. The change came on the revenue side to the extent that Lisa just described in those two, those two issues. And the only question remaining is if that shortfall in revenue is sufficient to cause us to make some change in the spending plan. Either across the board percentage reduction or picking out some items that we might not want to do.
Exactly.
Well, and as board members, we've been told that the positions haven't been refilled. How do we know what that savings is? We've, we've just been told over and over that these, that these positions weren't refilled. These positions weren't refilled, but we don't know exactly which ones or how much that is saving us.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, but I think early on, when you went through all of that, you described that some of those positions, non-fill positions plus whatever other work you did, rose to the $750,000 level. So we've had that information. We don't have the specific positions maybe.
Right.
And if you want that information, that would be added information. But we've, we've had the information that the work was done to make sure that they could cover that $750,000 shortfall.
I just want to see it. That's, I just want to see it.
We can bring that.
That's what I've struggled with since I got on the board was asking for information, being told, being told, I'm hearing words, but I'm not see, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I want to be able to refer back to it. I want to be able to see it again two weeks from now.
We have the list, so we can provide that.
Jessica, can you clarify something for me? In the beginning, when you brought forward the budget and there were all the problems, I mean, some of the categories that required wages and salaries or salaries and benefits, there wasn't anything classified there. It was significantly less. You said that that needed to be, that that was going to be portions of what was to be amended within the budget. But yet what I hear you say is that nothing was basically wrong, other than the general fund starting number was incorrect. What, I mean, have we actually rebalanced the accounts where there's actually salaries and benefits that were supposed to come out? That didn't, I think one of it was in special education because that number was extremely off. Has that been corrected on our current budget?
No, that has not been corrected. And corrections like that have to come too. That correction though is a wash because we're basically pulling from an area where the funds aren't supposed to be to where it should be. So it's, it's, it's going to net zero ultimately. So it doesn't impact the budget overall. It impacts where it lives in the budget, but it's not a direct impact like having to fix the revenue number to show that it is significantly less than what we said it would be.
Okay. And then with respect to, I know, we said we're not filling some of the positions that Michelle Stanford, when she left, you said you're not filling that position. However, a new position was created and another person was hired for her position, sorta. They're not doing the caliber that she was. So without an understanding of knowing what we actually gain by not, I mean, it's not a whole salary amount of Michelle Stanford, in my mind, it's a portion of it. Because we hired somebody, even though the board was told we are not going to hire that position again, another body was hired because apparently the department needed it.
No, we did not hire that, we didn't hire that position. We brought the job description to you, but we ended up not hiring that position. So, yeah, the, I don't want to use names in open session, but.
No, no, no.
The position, the other tech person, that, that person was hired two years ago. So we did not hire when the other one left.
Well, you brought a job description to us after the fact because you said that that position was hired and we questioned the fact that we weren't supposed to be hiring anymore. And this person wasn't of the same caliber, but that department needed another body. But it's, it's that type of infused communication to understanding what is it that we're really gaining or faking? Where is, where's that coming in on the budget? We don't know.
Right. So I will, I'll bring you the list of positions that we did not fill. But we, based on our conversation at that meeting when we talked about that job description, we went back to chat and just said, to your point, we, this was a position we said we weren't filling and so we didn't.
Okay.
We do, we have the job description should we need it, but we haven't used it.
Okay. Okay.
Are we talking about facilities?
Yes.
I was going to say again, listen to, yeah, Mr. Ferriola, if he wants to share with us. And we might have to come back with some of this.
Can that matrix, matrix be pulled up?
Yeah.
Or have you guys had a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want the mouse?
Essentially what I did on this was took information that I could find on projects that happened prior to me coming on with records. Records have been kind of sketchy as far as that goes. So, and then I, and then I built on it. And what I've done is by school identified what's been done, but also added a couple of columns on the end here to show short range and long range needs. These are what I deem needs to happen in an estimated kind of timeline for that. Obviously, the year, this is in no particular order regarding the year I have associated with on this column. That can be moved because I don't necessarily have a crystal ball to be able to tell, you know, what funds are going to be available for when. But it was important for me to get all the information down on a document by school so that you guys can see kind of where my head's at and what my recommendations would be moving forward for each building. Did any of it, was any of it confusing or did it make, did it make pretty, pretty good sense to you?
It don't make sense. You know, the difficulty that I had is, you know, you've got a spreadsheet for every school, which is, which is nice.
Right.
But as you go through that, then you got to try to remember back what, what was recommended on the other buildings. So try and get, wrap your mind around that. It's difficult in that respect. But otherwise, you did a good job. I could bring that all together.
Well, and, you know, not, not to make excuses, but this is not my.
Not my forte necessarily.
Right. But I wanted to get the information out so that we, I guess, together as a group can decide how you guys would like to possibly prioritize, you know, these two columns here. These are, at all schools, these are the two columns of focus that we should be, we should be looking at. Not necessarily what has been done, although that's, that's good for the history part of it. So do you guys have any questions about any of that? Or is any of that information that you didn't have any clue on the magnitude of the scope or?
Well, you've given kind of short and long range, which I really appreciate. But I guess the question becomes of all the school lists, can you pick out a handful of items that are, in your mind, the highest priority across the district? Because that's what we're going to have to try to do.
Right. I can. So obviously, the road that we've started down with the exteriors is a big one because safety and security is a big deal and those older buildings are a constant struggle for my crew to keep safe. Safe regarding doors, working properly and things like that. My suggestion would be, because we've started down that road, like I had mentioned before, that we stay on that course and finish. Once that's complete, and again, I would like to try to tie in other exterior aspects, sidewalks, things of that nature that can go kind of hand in hand with an exterior facelift. From there, we've got, we've got to go inside the buildings. And I am concerned with, with infrastructure internally, water pipes, things like that that are aging. And, you know, the incident we had over here at John Brown this winter where we had a water line break should give us a pretty good glimpse as to what can happen in a short amount of time if that takes place. Some of that stuff makes me a bit nervous in some of these older buildings. So, and I've, I've, I've consulted with, with people that are in the trades in that profession and they, they agree. Interior renovations seem to be, in my opinion, the next big move we make once we're done with.
Yeah.
The exterior. Unless, I'm not a big fan of bouncing around, unless you guys deem you want to do, to bounce around and do some exterior, some interior, some exterior, some, you know what I'm saying? I like to kind of be methodical about my approach on this stuff, but, you know, that's an option. But that's, that's my biggest concern is the interior of a lot of these buildings. We've, you know, exceeded the life of the, you know, electrical is not meeting the demand now. It's a real problem, constant problem. Schools are always wanting more power added and I just can't, we can't do it. You know, I mean, we just don't have any room to move. So I think exterior stuff is very important, but I think we really need to look hard at the inside of the buildings at some point, so.
Okay. On most of the schools, several of the schools at least, you know, you've got the perimeter fencing upgrade.
Yeah.
That's a work in progress. Upcoming and we do have that accounted for in the list that we prepared earlier.
Yes.
Correct. I don't know if the dollar amount is sufficient to cover all the work we want to do.
The majority of that $220,000 of that is coming from the state safety grant. And then we put $70,000 in for plant facility.
And when, yeah, when I generated those numbers for fencing, I did go on the high end just so we were sure that we would be able to fit in when the, the grant came to. And so you, you might see things on this list that are like grant related that aren't going to be absorbed necessarily by us in the end. I didn't update it that, that detail. I just, I wanted everything on paper so you guys could see it because kind of like to your point, you know, about not getting all the information. I want you guys to have everything that's on my brain 24/7 at each of the buildings. And this, this is pretty well it. This is what I think about seven days a week. So I hope you guys don't have to do that. I mean, it's not fun, but you have the information, so.
So tell me about the ADA updates on the buildings.
So we have, you know, a lot of the older buildings were built way back when and through the years, you know, ADA regulations have changed and we haven't necessarily kept up with that. So, you know, part of renovation that would take place would be updating ADA compliance in restrooms, things of that nature.
Yeah, like, give you an idea, like widening stalls, handrails.
Yeah, stalls, another, another big one. It'd be push button entry into buildings. So some, a few of our buildings have handicap access, push a button, doors open. The older buildings don't have that. So I'm more or less referring to older structures when it comes to that. But I listed them across the board because I, I know that I can find ADA in compliance stuff at most of the buildings. It would have to do with restrooms, I guess, and entry into the building, things of that nature. Just something to be mindful of. It would all be taken care of with the renovation, but I just want to kind of on your brain. Playground structures are something that, in my opinion, and this can be discussed further, I feel it's another mechanical piece to a site. However, I don't know that that's been the approach, or at least I don't get the impression that's been the approach prior. I see these buildings having to fundraise for $80,000 play structure or such and I just, that's a lot of cupcakes you got to sell. So I, I really feel that the district should be helping with that and they need to be on a rotation. I mean, they reach the end of their life and then, like I've talked about in the past, I end up dismantling portions of the structures to maintain the safety. So I think we need to keep that on our brain because there are a few schools right now fundraising for structured. Garwood's one of them, possibly Betty Kiefer. I'm not, I can't remember about that. But I, that's a conversation we should have. Maybe you guys don't agree with that. I, I just have a little bit of heartburn with schools having to fit the bill for, for a play structure. And they've got about a 20-year maximum life expectancy. I mean, they get hammered, you know, 365 almost. And they've just been overlooked. And I don't like having to just take parts off of them to keep them safe. I just don't. And I'll do it, but it needs to be on a rotation like, like other mechanical pieces at a building, in my opinion. So that's why I listed that.
Another one of the kind of short-term objectives you laid out was additional electronic access points around the buildings. And it's listed on several of the buildings.
Yeah, so that's a work in progress. And we have that kind of ball rolling. But again, I just wanted to get stuff down on paper and get it on, on there for you guys to see.
What kind of cost factor are we looking at?
Um, you know.
Per access point or something like that?
Yeah, that's a question for our tech guy that does the install. I want to say, wasn't it somewhere around maybe 1,500 to 2,000 per door roughly? I think something like that, rough, rough number, so.
So he's talking about the keyless access points? Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've already, the board's already set money.
Every group has that at the front end, right?
Right. And, but the board also set aside money and we have a purchase order out and we're just waiting to receive those, so.
So that's covered as well then?
Yes, it is. And again, I just wanted everything on a document, all down, so. That's a, that's a work in progress. Right now, I think the shortcoming with that is supply chain stuff still. We're still fighting that, so. Trying to think, was there any other, anything else that stuck out when you guys looked at that sheet that you had questions on? Or something that you wanted to see on that that's not on there?
I've been spending some time at the junior high.
Middle school.
Those bathrooms smell like piss, to put it lightly.
Yeah.
And it's unacceptable. The locker room smells like piss, you know, and, I know. But that's, you know, you got parents and people that use those bathrooms and they go in there and go, this. and know that, you know, they don't want to go in there, I don't want to go in there.
Yeah.
You know, and I know it's old, but that tile's probably just soaked up, you know, probably hasn't been sealed.
Right.
How many years, you know?
Right, right.
And
That's why it's grout, you know? Yep, that's why it's important, you know, for me to get into the interior on these renovations is for stuff exactly like that. Aside from the water line aspect of it, I mean, they just need, they need some attention.
I mean, some of that stuff, how old is that building, well, junior high?
Sixty-eight.
Nineteen sixty-three.
Yeah.
Sixty-three?
Yeah.
The old part, but then some of it's
Newer.
Thirty or forty years newer than that.
Right, right, yeah. That particular area you're talking about is basically virtually untouched.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, yeah, it's, it's, that's another byproduct of, again, of, yeah, not, not updating and things of that nature. There's only so much cleaning you can do in a building of that age. I mean, it's just, and then all the people that have come and cleaned and come and gone. I mean, it is, it's, it needs to be addressed for sure.
The gym.
Gym, yeah, and I've got gyms listed on all of them as far as, you know, flooring, things of that nature. Additional, you know, bleachers, I want to get rid of all the wood bleachers, they're, they're a hassle to deal with, so.
If you had to come up with the magic number per facility?
Uh-huh.
What would it be? Two million dollars per facility?
To address these issues here?
Yeah.
At each building?
Yeah. Each, two million, each, three million?
You know, with, with the way things are today, with, with current pricing, you're probably closer to the three or more. Yeah. You're talking, I mean, when you're talking about an interior renovation, it's a, it's a sizable, it's a sizable project, you know, you've got electrical, plumbing, and then any changing on the interior to meet the needs of, of current demand and flow. You know, it could quickly climb, for sure, so. And I guess that's the dilemma, you know, we have to, we have to chip away, that's the only way, I know how to do it at this point, is to just chip away at it and prioritize line by line. And again, we started down the path, I think, is, is a, is a good path with the exteriors, just from the simple fact of the safety and, and the security part of it. The roofing that we've done and invested to this point was huge, you know, things like that can, that can disrupt a building quickly, is what my focus has been. And, and on the interior end of it, I just, I worry on some of these buildings that we're gonna have something go down and I don't, I don't like it, so.
There's some that, I heard there's some at Twin Lakes, when it rains, the water just going right down the side of the building when it's stuccoed. And so, it's gonna start chipping away at that stucco and then it's gonna get on the inside of that building and then.
We have a few buildings that have architectural shortcomings.
Yeah.
That, that drive-it material, they call it, is a horrible material for our environment. And it is, it drips down the side, the drip edge is insufficient, most likely is what's going on and it does. It goes down and gets, gets into the soffit and the soffit sags. And you can see it at Twin Lakes and Timberlake Middle School, all the areas that we've gone and had to re-forify and, and re-screw back up, you know, Garwood, any of those older buildings that have that material, they just, yeah, it's a shortcoming for sure. It's a big struggle for us to keep that, you know, buttoned up, so. That would be part of an exterior renovation, which pretty much all the schools need at this point to fix that, you know, so.
I think we need to focus on all the, I don't know, I think we need to focus on anything that's a liability first, you know, sidewalks.
Safety issue.
Safety issues. And then we need to go to anything that's gonna cause damage to the inside or the outside of the school.
Yeah, yeah.
On that priority list.
Yeah, well, we're on that path right now, to your point. I mean, the exteriors and everything that goes with that, like I said, I would like to add concrete as another element to that, that project and start knocking a few things out at one time. Would be a recommendation I would, I would, you know, ask to be approved if we're gonna go down that road. Is there any other, any other thoughts on that train of thought? Any other input or my way out base?
Mike, on the concrete matter, I know you mentioned that you're like, you know, you'd much rather do just like the whole district. I don't know if you've ever given us an estimate for all the concrete work that you view needing to be done at all of the schools. Can you ballpark that?
To redo all of the, all of the concrete sidewalks at all the sites?
Well, you had stated at one of the facility workshops that, you know, if we were gonna do concrete, you'd wanna do all of the buildings. Because for me, I mean, I, I'm very disturbed about the concrete at the high school because of the liability that's
Right.
Wrapped in there
Yeah.
At Lakeland High School.
Yeah.
But then you said you'd much rather do it all, all at once. And yet, I don't recall getting numbers from you as far as like what's an all in one or if we just chose to do a building here and there, et cetera, what the cost difference would be.
I can, I can calculate, do my best to calculate based on the, the footage that would be needed to do each site. I did get a bid to do Lakeland High School on the staff side, Super One side, to replace that entire run and the entries into the building at 120,000. So, I mean, that would give you a, you know, a kind of an idea of what
All right, that was, that was a recent?
Yeah, that was a bid that I got, that's one of those things I got a bid and passed along. I believe it was the, the end of last year. I do know concrete has, has taken a jump, but I could certainly
Right.
Figure out what the current, current rate for concrete is and apply it to that bid and get you a more accurate number. I mean, it might, it might be 140, I don't know, but that's a big area, you know, that's a pretty good size area to do.
It is a huge area.
So, right, so you can kind of get an idea, but if, if the board would like, I could, I could see what current price for concrete is and, and figure it out, you know, what it would cost per site and give you a grand total.
That would be great.
Okay, all right.
I was gonna say, and that's the worst place that?
Lakeland is right at, is, I would say, certainly top five and then, again, it's all the older, older sites, so Spirit Lake, Athol, they're rough. Lakeland Middle School's got a few sections that are rough. We found out at Lakeland Middle School this summer during the construction process that several areas where the, the pore was done originally, only that thick. I mean, right in the hole, they, they put a hole in for equipment running across it, right? And I was looking at it going, that's crazy. I'm surprised that it's, it's held up as long as it has, so. Yeah, Spirit Lake, Athol, John Brown, this sidewalk here needs attention. It's virtually gonna be pretty much every site with the exception of, you know, Twin Lakes is pretty solid still, Timberlake Middle School's pretty solid, all your newer buildings like that are gonna require maybe just some light repair, but full on replacement. Yeah, it's gonna be a bulk, a bulk of them, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll work on getting a number for you guys on that and then, then you'll know. What else can we chat about?
What do we need to determine tonight?
Well, it sounds like, based on Chair Thompson's request, I guess what I would recommend is that Mike bring to the board at the December board meeting the cost for, the overall cost of concrete so that you have that dollar amount. And then, once you have that dollar amount, we'll just have an action item on the December board meeting for you guys to identify what your top priorities are going to be so Mike can get moving on whatever those projects are going to be.
For me tonight, well, just to get you guys this matrix, answer questions, he can get you on the same page of where, where my head's at on the big picture and then we can pick away at it.
Well, we ought to, caveat across that again, Mike, with respect to the concrete, is that, take a look at, site by site, determine how much needs to be replaced. If it's 100% telos, it's, it's only 75% telos
Sure.
That amount
Sure.
And don't calculate into the cost any more than that.
Sure.
So, you know, we, we narrow it right down in that respect.
Yeah.
I'm not one to replace something that's not broken.
No, I hear you, yeah, right.
You know?
Yep, for sure.
But, you know, if, as Dave says, there's a safety hazard involved or something like that, then, you know, we need to address that. But, you know, don't spend money just replacing something because it's old.
Right.
Mike, I do have a question on the fence project.
Okay.
That was, the board, it was grant funded, but then we contributed 70,000 to kind of come up to what was needed. However, it's saying a remaining balance is 85,450. Can you give a little insight into that?
I, I honestly can't speak to the cost at the moment, that I wasn't involved in that portion of it.
Are you looking at the plant facility levy budget document that we put in there?
I'm looking at the prelim budget for 7523.
That 80, the $80,000 number is what's left that hasn't been budgeted. It, it's not specific to the fencing project, it's just the amount of funds that were unbudgeted from the initial plant facility levy.
Okay, okay.
We do have some doors also at some of our schools that were identified when we just did our vulnerability assessment that aren't matching properly, that Mike's crew has worked and reworked and reworked, that some of them will have, will take, get taken care of this summer when Athol and Spirit Lake are fixed, but we have another school that has an issue and it's not one that's on our radar right now, so.
School is from Garwood.
What's the biggest, so, the doors, right? They're just not latching and they've probably been moved up and down several times, right?
Yeah.
Is there a way we can rip those doors out, the frames, and then have welding or K-Tech fix those the right way and then put it back in?
Um, you'd be, so what I'm doing is all the, all the doors currently are your standard three hinge
Right.
Type of the door. I switched that, starting with the middle school, went with a continuous hinge, so it's essentially like a huge piano hinge. They require virtually no attention essentially. They don't, they won't move like a three hinge door will move.
Right.
A lot of the issue is with the door frames and I just, I'm not a big fan of something that's not factory.
Right.
I'm not a big fan of taking something out because then liability falls on our, on our shoulders or K-Tech shoulders if there were a problem with that.
Yeah.
I mean, people can go in the weeds and then they're going, you guys modified that door. My brain's always thinking of stuff like that, so specifically to Garwood, it needs the same attention that the middle school and Athol and Spirit Lake are getting. So, that's all part of the path that we're on with the, the exterior mindset, you know, and, and I'm making small improvements as I go and one of them, a big one, is the continuous hinge on the doors, so. But they're, they're a daily, just so you guys know, it's a daily work order for my department across the district, it, it's doors not closing or latching. I have two guys in my shop that, they're both HVAC techs, but they divert and, and spend, it's a high priority to me and I get one of those that come to my computer, boom, it goes right to the top of the list and they get dispatched immediately. But it is a daily, a daily work order for my crew, so, yeah. We do the very best we can, it just requires a lot of attention.
So, are the hinges there resolved for Garwood or is it a new set of doors?
At Garwood? Garwood would be framed, if, when we get down to that, that point, it would be frames and the whole nine yards because the frames fatigue as much as the doors do and you figure a building of 91, we, we've got our life out of it. I mean, opening and closing and
Right.
You know, things fatigue and they become very problematic. We've gone as far as putting what we call pivot hinges. If you go to a school and you see a, a chrome bracket in the top left or right-hand corner of a door, it's a pivot hinge and what that does is shorten the frame up to the door so that it will close. It's a, it's a Band-Aid, but, but that's what I'm, I'm forced to do. And you'll notice a lot of those throughout the district as you're traveling, pay attention, you'll see, you'll see those things that we've installed as a, as a means to keep it working properly until a long-term plan can, you know, be decided on, so.
And a set of doors is more than half a million now? Did I see on the bill list 700 something?
Um, you know, we're working, I could, I could get you a, a number, probably it's pretty close to the next board meeting because we're in the process now of getting ready to place orders
Okay.
For Athol and Spirit Lake. I can get you a current, current market price on that at the next, the next time we meet.
That'd be good.
But it is, it's pricey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think I have any more questions, it was quite a bit. Chair Thompson, did you have any more questions for Mike?
No, rest, rest, rest of the night, do not.
Okay, so are we good to adjourn and before our next meeting?
Yes, we're good to adjourn.
Okay, so we will adjourn at 5:47.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Yep, thank you very much.
You're welcome.